This time I'd like to call to order the August 8, 2007 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that Ms. Messrs. Julio Dumas, Mike Bardwell, and Alan Kraus are absent. All the Commissioners are present. This time, I'd like to, uh...item three, accepts the minutes of the July 13, 2007 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item four, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the Commission on any agenda item not up for public hearing, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak.
Evening. I want to pause. I came straight in from the field. I'm kinda messy today. I didn't realize that today's meeting was going on. My name's Carlos Duran. I'm an Ascension Parish resident. I was up here about six months ago regarding the Wesley Place. And due to some of the format issue of this particular forum, y'all did conditionally approve Wesley Place, but there really wasn't an opportunity, say, for this, for me to come up and just kinda ask some general questions regarding that approval. If y'all don't remember, Ms. Slimon, I think, was actually who made the motion. It was a conditional approval, as long as other residents or flooding in the area doesn't get worse. Whereas, I recognize the spirit of that motion. I think that the practicality is very, very subjective. I guess some of the general questions that I had were, who's gonna monitor the flooding? Just the word "worse" is really subjective when you're talking about, you know, what defines worse? Is one inch higher of flooding worse? Or is, when water gets in people's houses, are we gonna dictate that as being worse? So who's gonna monitor that? And what's gonna happen if it does actually become worse? In addition, you know, once the clearing begins and the hydrology's altered, I don't think we're gonna be able to go back. So if he comes in, if Mr. Chees comes in and clear cuts and changes the flow, and we do have a worse situation, what's gonna happen then? Once you breach that point, you know, is he not gonna be able to go back and restore the condition to its current state? So I'm just wondering if these are basically some just general issues, if y'all have even considered these. And really, that's about it. I know that it's probably been about six months since y'all discussed this, so I kinda wanted to allow that to kinda slow down. And I don't think there's been any work done out there. I think the...I don't think any of the 404, the 401, any of the things that we talked about six months ago have been addressed. But just some...I'd like to get y'all's opinion on some of those issues. Y'all can...have y'all thought about that? The subjectiveness of the decision? Who's gonna monitor it? Who's responsible for monitoring it? What's gonna be considered worse? And if flooding does get worse, what's the Commission's stance gonna be on? They just gonna halt development and leave it at that situation? Is you gonna have to go back and change it back? Just some general questions. I'll sit down and let y'all discuss, or if y'all wanna think about it and bring it up on another point. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move along to...
I'll just make a general comment, if you allow me to do that. I do consider all of these things. I take this position to my heart. And I consider all of those things. I'm the one that did the research on the 404 permitting issues. And so...and that's all on my time. That's all on my nickel. And this is on my nickel as well, if you will. So serving on this as a voluntary...but I take it to heart. It's a public servant, and I like doing that. I encourage that for our community to get involved. One of the ways that you can get involved is write your thoughts down on paper and send it to your councilman. If that doesn't get you any resolve, write your thoughts down again and send it to the Parish President. Continuing pushing that...those concerns that you have, not just to us. You said a couple times that it's...you pretty much didn't have a voice or an opportunity to come back after we made a decision. You always have a voice and an opportunity as a citizen. You can petition any group or organization. You can sit down with Mr. Hughes or anybody in the Parish and talk to them about those issues. So me personally, I take it to heart. Every decision that I make up here, I realize it's gonna affect me, my children. You know, we're residents of this community as well. And I think about the homeowners that are adjacent to this piece of property and other properties. What's gonna happen to their property? The term "worse" is a loose term. But if a subdivision comes before us for our decision, and they meet all the ordinance standards that are set out there, then that...they've met what they need to meet. If they've met the federal guidelines of obtaining core permits, then they've met the federal guidelines. They're gonna do mitigation for that site. That's what they're required to do. They're also required to do drainage impact studies. The drainage impact says that there's a negative impact to that area, that we rely on our engineering firm to tell us that. So there's a lot of thought process that goes on. It's not a helter-skelter, you know, kind of a willy-nilly situation. There's a lot that goes into it, a lot of research. I appreciate your comment and your concern, but I would just encourage you to become involved and take those concerns. Write 'em down, send 'em to those people in the Parish, and don't stop until you get an answer that you're looking for and you feel satisfied. So I appreciate your comments, but I just wanted you to know, that's my stance, that's my heart.
Anyone else have any other comments? Alright, then we'll move along. Item five, public hearing for granting approval to the following family partitions, 5A, the Millie Godan property lots 1A-1 and 1A-2.
James Faugu, representing Ms. Millie Godan, following family partition. Some comments were made. All comments were addressed and corrected on the plat, asking the Commission for approval.
Comments or questions from Commissioners? If no comments or questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and we'll get you three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Okay, I have a question. Lot 1A2 has the 15-foot drainage servitude along the backside of the property. Where does that drain?
Excuse me?
Where does it drain?
Probably drain...it's gonna drain to the south of the property line. There's a ditch that runs back down that line as it is.
Along?
The neighboring property. There's a little ditch.
On Lot 1A1?
No, you see where the Sabas Duplessis property is? There's a little swell ditch back in that area.
Okay, okay. 'Cause I know, when I drove down Millie's Mountain Road, I went over the little covert ditch, and I wondered if it drained that way.
Well, the property does kinda, in a certain way, they go this way. Put up in the front, and everything kinda goes to the front. It's kind of a little swell.
James, you said "south," but so you're saying it drains to the east, really?
Southeast.
Southeast?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess what I wanna know, is that the appropriate place to put the drainage servitude? Or is it just there because our ordinance says, "Put it on the back of the property"?
Uh...basically, ordinance says.
Well, but the ordinance...Charles, doesn't the ordinance also say you can put it along the side of the property if the side is more appropriate?
If that's been determined by the...by the Engineering Review Agent, yes, it could be. If it's determined that it's a better location.
Okay, who's representing CSRS tonight?
Kathy Cowan is here.
And you probably have no idea. I know you...
Well, we don't see contours, so it would really be more a call...survey would have a better opportunity to gauge Ms. Ryan's position.
So as it stands now, is that perpendicular to the normal drainage flow, James? Would be better suited, and Sherry's pointing out that if we push the drainage to the side as opposed to the back, would the flow work better?
Hmm. The property does basically like this.
Turtle backs?
When the trailer sits, it's pretty much the highest ground, and after that, it drops down afterwards. You know, from the trailer, everything drains to the front ditch, and it looks like after that, everything drains to the back.
To the north and south?
To the east and west.
East and west, okay.
From the trailer, it looks like everything drains to the west. Behind the trailer, everything...it looks like it drains to the east.
Okay, and so the adjacent properties...
I mean, we didn't do a topo on the property like that to see the actual drainage, but just the natural contour.
The property to the south, Tammy L. Burgess property, is there a ditch that runs along her property, along Lot 1A2? Do you know?
Repeat that question.
Is there a drainage servitude that's along Tammy L. Burgess property? Is there a ditch back there, the property that's to the south?
I don't know if there's actual drainage servitude on the property.
But did you see a swell back there?
Yeah, I mean, towards the Sabas Duplessis property. When we were searching for that property corner, it is a low section that does swell down.
So would it make more sense to put the drainage servitude along the south of the... I'm just trying to make the flow happen, just like Sherry pointed out.
Yeah, Ms. Millie is present. We could ask her if she wouldn't.
Sherry, you think that...is that what you're saying?
I just wanna make sure we're not just popping it in the back of the property just because the ordinance says, "Put it there."
I agree with you.
I wanna make sure it's working correctly. That's all I'm asking.
Absolutely. And it shouldn't be perpendicular to the normal flow. Let it flow parallel or with the normal drainage.
Drainage servitude down this line here.
The property flows from Black Bayou Road. It flows back.
On this map, where's Black Bayou Road? This map I'm looking at, James, where's Black Bayou on here?
Black Bayou's north of this.
To the north side of this map?
Yes.
And all the water flows to the back.
Right.
Is how the water drains.
Okay, so with...in your experience, you think this is the correct place for the drainage servitude?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow.
A second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 5B, the called Duplessis property tracks B-1 and B-2. Is there any...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Murray McCullough with Benchmark Group Engineering and Surveying, 11328 Pennywood Avenue in Baton Rouge. This is a simple, little family partition. We're taking Track B, which is a 9.1-acre track, and subdividing it into, for family partition, into tracks B1 and B2. B1 being an 8.6-acre track, and roughly 8.6-acre track, and B2 being a half-acre track. We received comments from the Engineering Review Agent from the Parish. We've addressed those comments and owned the plat and sent revised plats back to the Parish, and simply ask your approval on this simple family partition.
Any comments or questions from Commissioners? If there are no comments or questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Same question. This drainage servitude on the back of Track B2, where does it go?
This one drains...and to answer your question, it's probably as part because of the ordinance, but this one does drain toward the southeast, to...into the existing little pond you see right there, and then to a lower area that drains that whole area. So it is in conformance to where the current drainage patterns are.
Okay, thank you.
There was a comment given to us also by Ascension Parish Health Unit, and I'll just read it aloud, that the method of locating discharge from the sewer treatment system, it seems like there was a question there.
I think that's the same question, Scott.
Same question for you, okay.
What's the wish of the Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Sherry Slimon.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six, public hearing for granting preliminary approval to the following subdivision, 6A, East Creek Villas', second filing.
Good evening. My name's Craig Quarry with Monroe and Quarry, 11325 Pennywood Avenue in Baton Rouge. This is an extension of the East Creek Villas' subdivision. We're adding 14 lots and extending tenure drive, and not providing any additional outlets to Germany Road. It'll come through the subdivision. Really were no major...no comments from the Engineering Review Agency. This was all in...it was plotted as a commercial lot when we originally did the East Creek Villas'. We're just taking one of those commercial lots and making residential lots out there.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
I have a comment, and it's just probably, I'm sure, an oversight, but in your general notes under number 11, it lists the lots that front on Germany Road, and one of those numbers is wrong.
Okay.
And it's not...really, it's just for future. Someone moves in and says, "Hey, I wanna make an extra driveway."
Sure, sure.
You might wanna correct that.
We'll make that correction. Okay.
Yeah, where is Track A?
Track A is what you're looking at, lots 51 through 64. That was Track A.
On your lots 64, going around to Lot 55?
Yes.
Where's the drainage servitude on those?
On Lot 64? It's running between 25 and 64. We left 64 a lot wider. We're providing for...we're stubbing out drainage to Tracks B and C to collect that drainage.
Okay, what about Lot 63?
63'll drain to the front.
To the front?
Yeah, we can have a servitude along the back there if we need it.
No, all I see on the front is a building line and a utility servitude.
Yeah, we drain to the street, into the street right of it.
Don't...um...but the ordinance requires a 15-foot drainage servitude.
Not in the front of a lot. If the lot's draining to the front, they were draining to the right of it.
Charles, is that allowed?
In the review by the Engineering Review Agent, it was felt that it wasn't necessary since it is draining to the street.
What about any kind of maintenance behind those lots?
There really wouldn't be any public maintenance.
Okay. Okay, and I'm sorry, which lot...all those lots are gonna drain to the street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
I have another question. Between Lot 25 and 64, you've got a 145-foot callout?
It should be just a 45-foot. It's showing the width of what's buildable on Lot 64.
It's showing what?
It should be just 45. I mean, on the plat I'm looking at, it says 45.
No, going...
Oh, okay, that's the depth of the...uh, that looks like...
I can't tell if the lots changed depth or...
No, they don't. That might be an error there, too.
Okay, and then one more, Lot 54 and 55 don't have a utility servitude.
The utility servitude is about...or is the same place where the building line...we have a 12-and-a-half-foot building line, so it doesn't really show up very well. We do have a 12-foot utility servitude along the front of those two lots.
It is there?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
I will. This may be a little bit premature for the meeting, but we've talked extensively up here about T-turnarounds and that sort of thing, and allowing for enough space for turning around. Tonight, later on, we will discuss that. So I've got the cart a little bit before the horse, but excuse me for a moment, 'cause this is still a concern. CSRS has prepared a kind of a review, if you will, of the requirements, the national requirements for turnaround standards and that sort of thing. I know this is not your final, but just be cognizant of that, your T-turnaround, that we're looking at that.
Okay.
And so we've got this packet here tonight. We're gonna talk about that later. But the International Fire Code, it gives us diameters of that turnaround and what's ...what should occur, and lengths of fire trucks, and all those kind of things. But your turnaround may or may not fit into that. So I just wanna give you a precursor to that.
Thank you.
But I'd be remiss without saying it, 'cause we've drilled everybody else about T-turnarounds. So you've just been drilled.
Thank you.
With a T-turnaround.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from Commissioners?
I have one more question. I think there were just a lot of things that were overlooked. General notes, number three, you have three commercial lots listed, and on the plat, we only see two.
That is correct. Obviously, these were notes were taken from the original East Creek development. I will make that correction then.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Then what is the wish of the Commission?
Make a motion to approve on condition that the notes are all, I would say, looked at again. Make sure that they all line up to the correct plat.
Correct.
A second.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Paige Becknell, seconded by Sherry Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6B, Rinwood Townhomes, name changed to Silver Oaks.
Lester McLennan, McLennan Associates of...I have some larger copies. Do y'all have those?
We have one. Thank you.
We have...we're proposing preliminary approval of 41-lot townhouse development. We're asking for a waiver of the width of the drive to...we're allowing one-way traffic around the project. We have addressed all the comments from the staff and the Engineering Review Agency. We ask for your approval.
Do you have anything else to add to that, Lester?
Um, not really.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Yeah, on a typical lot layout?
Yes.
It's got the garage, two-car garage and that, and then it's sticking out one foot basically into the 20-foot private servitude, the passage. Backing up that car from that garage, how are you gonna do it in 15 feet?
We're not...we're not extending into the servitude, the passage.
But that's what it shows here.
Well...
In the little cutout, Lester?
Yeah, okay.
It certainly gives the appearance that you're...
Well, the dash line that's on the left-hand side is the servitude line, which matches up with that, and the lot adjacent to it, we show the building line going back a half a foot, so...
So the solid line is actually the front of the next building?
Is the servitude line. And then on the...
The dash line is the servitude line?
Right.
And the solid line is the next building?
That's right.
Your neighbor?
That's right.
Staggered.
Yeah, and that isn't all driveway. All you got is 15 feet to back out on. Out of the garage.
Yes, sir. You'll be backing out and headed in the same direction you came in, you know, the same way you're coming into it.
Correct, which is a one-way street.
Yes, sir.
The other comments or questions from Commissioners?
I have a question for staff. We have a comment that says, although the density of this development meets the requirements, considerations should be given to providing more open space between the groupings of townhouse lots. I see that the developer has gone from 44 to 41 lots. Is that sufficient to remedy that issue that was brought up by staff?
I think it has. By the reduction, it has helped it.
Comments or questions? If there are no other comments or questions, it will open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Okay, I got a question. How far off the road, off of Highway 42, is your treatment plan? In the pre-op meeting, it was my understanding that you had to have everything set back at least 75 feet to allow widening of Highway 42. And I was wondering if it's that far back. It doesn't look like it to me, but I don't have a scale that small.
Right now, the site itself is, of course, adjacent to the right-of-way line, and it's 50-foot deep, and it doesn't appear to be at 75 feet. I wasn't aware of the 75-foot. See, we got here. Was it...
Well, I was at that pre-op meeting, and I do have it in my notes. But also, there's a note here from Bill Rue dated back in February 19, which says adequate right-of-way is needed for widening, which it is in the works, as I understand. It says allowance for this extra servitude is mandatory. They can either donate to the state now or hold this green space till the project begins.
It appears that it's not 75 feet right now, and we don't have a problem adjusting it and moving it back.
Okay. Then I had another question. It looks like all the green space on this plat, as you have it laid out, is detention area.
Most of it is. It's gonna be dry detention?
Right. But...so you're not gonna have any trees on the property? Because you can't put the trees in detention area, right? So it's just gonna be pretty...
Hot.
Unpleasing to look at.
You got some area right up at the front.
Which may be taken for road widening.
Probably not all of it, but it could be.
Small trees.
We have...there's an area there by Lot...well, 40, 41, 40, and 39 on the west side. Also, 1, 2, 3, and 4 on the east side. 21, 22, and 23 on the west side.
There's not...yeah, those areas are not part of detention.
Those are swell ditches, though?
Yeah, but the swell ditch doesn't take up the whole thing.
Doesn't show me that on the map. It just says swell ditch. I don't know what the dimensions of that are.
It's just a small...I mean, it's a swell. It's just a small little...
Small V-bottom ditch.
That's where that line is.
But you're not gonna plant trees in the swell ditch?
No, not planting on it. I don't think so. No, I mean, we don't need to.
So I think that's Sherry's question, it's all gonna be grass?
Say the majority's gonna be grass, but...
I really don't know how they're gonna landscape it, maybe they...I'm sure they will, you know? With trees where they can.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? What is the wish of the Commission?
So I think that's Sherri's question. It's all going to be grass?
Say the majority is going to be grass, but...
I really don't know how they're going to landscape it. Maybe they, I'm sure they will, you know? With trees where they can.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission? Oh, and I would like to go ahead and point out, if there is, if there is a motion to approve, that, I mean, spell out that we are granting the waiver.
Well, I will make a motion. It would be my motion, my, I would make the motion to deny because I don't want to give the waiver. I think you're cramming too much into this piece of property, so you don't even have enough room for your streets. You don't have room for trees. It's, it's just putting too much on the property. The, um, when I went to the pre-act meeting, there was 20-foot spaces between the sets of townhomes, and now those are all gone. And it was because the detention area has been increased.
Have a motion to deny by Sherri Slimon.
Second.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7, public hearing for granting final approval to the following subdivision, 7A, Fairbanks at Santa Ma.
Good evening, I'm Buddy Earls. And this is a subdivision that consists of 33 lots in the Santa Ma area. And we have addressed all the review comments from the parish engineer. We seek your approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners? Buddy, you did see staff comments?
I beg pardon?
You did see the staff comments?
Yes.
Have those been addressed as well?
They've all been.
So it is determined who will be maintaining the park? The dedication note has been added, and, uh, let's see, the other name of developer should be included in the title block. That has all been done.
We have, uh, is staff comments different from the engineer's comments?
Yep.
Where did I get those?
From staff.
They're right there.
Can we address those?
It looks like I missed number two. Looks like I forgot to include that. But, I mean, that's something that's easy enough to add.
We'll, we'll address all of that. There should be no problem.
Who is going to own the park?
We will make...
I'd like to make sure there's a dedication. I'd make sure the parish doesn't assume that responsibility unless they agree. Well, we'll, we'll go ahead, and we'll, we'll discuss that, uh, while this is on, you know, while this is up. Anything else you have to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, where is the park?
Right in the middle of the project.
Okay, got you. Uh, where's the treatment plant?
Treatment plant?
Yep.
At the back end of Lot 15.
Wow. It's a tough plat to read. That's it right there.
Yeah.
Do you have a larger copy?
Yes, sir.
I didn't hear that one. Who's going to maintain the park?
Uh, the park is going to be maintained by the homeowners. The park will be, uh, beaded to the homeowners association. It will be written in the homeowners association no recordation file, and they will own the park. And it's our treatment plant.
Okay.
Let me make sure I understand. The homeowners association will own the sewer treatment plant? Mr. Sigler, any comment from you?
The, the plat says the sewer plant site is to be dedicated to the wastewater of Louisiana for operation and maintenance.
That's right.
Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, are you, you got one?
Yeah, I, on the temporary T-turnaround that you show here, has it been constructed? Since you don't have a final inspection, I just want to make sure that there is a, a T-turnaround being constructed. Paved, everything?
Yes.
And I guess I point that out to the engineering review to make sure...
We will, we will extend that road shortly, though.
I don't want to hear that. That's not what I'm asking.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? And they will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishes to speak? Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question. I see one access, I think.
Ma'am?
I see one access that I'm assuming is to the park. How, how are the residents supposed to get to the park area? Is there just one access? I'm not sure that that's even an access.
It would be that one access that, uh, that is between lots, uh...
Lot 25 and 26? Is there, is that the only access?
What's the little arrow pointing to between lots 30 and 31? You've got kind of a floating arrow? I wasn't sure if that was another access or supposed to be, or... Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that one just goes away? Did anybody address the comment about the, um, the individual treatment plants? There's, and, um, in your note, under the sewage disposal, it says individual plants.
It's going to be a, a treatment plant, yes, ma'am.
Right, but it says, right now, it says individual plants?
Say it again, please.
It says individual plants on the notes?
That may have been on one of the previous copies.
Okay, yours doesn't have that?
That was revised, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, you're saying right behind sewer disposal?
Right. Mine still says it.
That was, that was revised.
Okay.
The topography that's laid out on the map is, is Lot 32, 33, and in that area where the smaller oval shape, is that the high part of the property? And things drain away from that to the outside of the development?
Yes, that's a, uh...
I can't find your numbers, so that's why it's a little hard to read.
That's the su, uh, that's the, uh, that's in the flood zone, C. That, that notates the flood zones.
It does screw up. So it's draining this way. Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
My advice would be on Lot 26, 25, where that access is to the park, that you would, uh, fully, um, you know, tell those people on 25 and 26 not to have a fence and think they can build up across the servitude. It's a common problem that people put fences across servitudes and so forth, and then what will happen is 10 years down the road, people will say, five years down the road, where's this? Why can't we get to the park? And the misconception might be the people that have backyards and budding to the park can only use the park. The people on the outside can't have access only because there's a fence up that's put in their own place.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, and that, right. Absolutely. Then that, that'll, that'll solve your problem.
Go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Don Grant.
Second.
Seconded by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I would just like to add a, um, second part to that, that then, and they need to make their proper revisions on the map that we discussed.
That's right.
So amended motion, amended. Don, you want to go ahead and amend your motion to? Okay. I have a motion to approve, a motion to approve the condition.
Sure.
Any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7B, West Creek Villas.
Craig Quarry with Monroe and Quarry. We have, uh, it's actually West Creek Estates. It was listed wrong on the agenda. Ready for, um, we'll be ready for our final inspection next week, but everything else is pretty much in, ready to go.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
T-turnarounds. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Uh, do you, uh, do you see staff comments as far as the restriction of lots along, uh, Germany Road?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Comments or questions from commissioners? We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Is track A a pond? Stone water retention point?
Yes.
And that, that little swatch of land between 45 and 44, that would be your access for the rest of the neighborhood?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
No, sorry.
What is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell.
Second.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7C, Keystone of Galvez, first filing parts 1 and 2.
Good evening. My name is Derek Murphy with Ferris Engineering, and we're here tonight to ask your approval on the final plat of Keystone of Galvez, first filing parts 1 and 2, contingent upon, uh, the final inspection and the punch list items being addressed. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Where are you right now in the turn lane improvements? How far along are you?
Which turn lane?
You have a comment in Highway 933 and 44?
The, uh, the turn lane will probably be laying asphalt Monday morning, and it will also be in the final inspection. So it's, uh, I'd say it's, except for the asphalt, it's pretty much done.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Any comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve contention for the final inspection.
Have a motion to approve with condition Sherri Slimon.
Second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7D, Renwood, Phase 1 and 2.
Lester McLean with McLean and Associates. We have, we're asking for approval of the final plat. We hadn't quite finished our construction, primarily because of the rain over the last three weeks, but we should have it finished in another, another week. And we asked him to get the plat approved, contingent upon that and the final inspection and post-maintenance mark.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Comments or questions from commissioners?
Is the barricade in yet on Camden Avenue? In the comments, it says it will be done. Has it been done yet?
No, ma'am. We haven't finished the construction yet. We should have it done next week.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I would be remiss if I didn't say something about the T-turnarounds again. So I'm going to make my comment, and then later, we'll hear something more about that.
I just had a quick question. Mr. McLean, just from my own information, I don't really understand this. The Sparrow Court and Cardinal Court are real wide, 95-foot right-of-way. Just from my own information, would you, um, explain that to me?
We have a, it's a two-lane deal. There's a median in between there. We're going to have some guest parking.
Okay, okay.
That's what that's for.
It doesn't show on here. That's why I didn't, I didn't understand it.
That's what's there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Those are shown as public right-of-way, and you can't have guest parking in public right-of-way?
So we, so we need to take the median part out and make a common area?
That could be a possibility, but you can't have the parking in the public right-of-way? Because when it was first proposed, it was proposed as a private servitude of passage with the parking. And then it was changed to public right-of-way.
I'm not quite sure why it was changed at all.
Well, Lester, I'm going to give you an opportunity. If you want to go ahead and pull this from the agenda and make, check out, double-check this and get it right, and bring it back to us, I'm going to give you that opportunity right now.
And we just, like, defer it till next week, next month?
Nah, I'm going to give you that opportunity, yes.
Then I'll, I'll take that.
I make a motion to defer.
See, you're going to turn me down if...
I have a, I have a motion...
You got the message, Mike.
I have a motion to defer by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 8, public hearing to consider the following simple divisions of property with a variance. 8A, Spencer P. Gotrow Property Tracks 3-a-1-a-1 and 3-a-1-a-2.
Good evening. Clint Quatmal representing WJ Quatmal Surveyors. Ask for plan and commission approval on the following simple partition with a variance.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Comments or questions from commissioners?
I'm thinking there might be a note missing on this plat. There's a dedication for, let's see, the right-of-ways are to the public, but the private servitude, shouldn't that have a, a, a private dedication, Charles?
Do you not have this one right above there? Maybe you don't have the correct...
I don't have that. We don't have that one.
Send it in.
Could you all put it on the projector, so we can all see that?
Here's the private servitude dedication.
Okay. Charles, have you seen that plat that he just showed us?
We emailed it to the consulting agency.
That's now we... Whether he got it or not, I don't know.
We received it.
If they emailed it, if they emailed it to Charles...
Yeah. Here's our, uh, consultant corrections that we corrected it.
It's okay.
Clint, if you're gonna, if you're gonna email something, email it to me.
I'll just have to CC it then, yeah.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell.
A second.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item eight B, Pelican Business Ventures LLC property tracks A dash one through A dash four.
Again, the, uh, private, uh, servitude dedication has been added on this plat as well. That was part of the, uh, correction from the consulting agency, as well as, um, adding section lines, which where there were no adjacent section lines on this piece of property. And a note of waiver of lots, which has also been added, right below reference maps, as well as another comment, uh, is a private road to be built within the private access service, uh, servitude. If so, to what construction standards will this road be built? And I have a note on here. Construction shan- standard shall be in accordance with the Central Parish Division Regulation Section sixty point one hundred under subsection A, and that is the same, uh, standard required for the family partitions, uh, with private servitudes of access.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Charles, the minimum lot size and rule is, is what?
Twenty.
One per thousand? Twelve thousand?
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. And no one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I gotta, on the access to the property, you got forty feet, but you got a power line running right down the middle of it. I'm curious, is, how does that function? I mean, if, the, the concept is that servitude is to be, uh, restricted for the access into the property, and if you got a power line running down right the, right down the middle of it, it seems like you're at a disadvantage trying to get the access in there. And then the safety, I guess, of also getting into the property. I mean, someone could back into the pole, uh, I just don't see that as a desirable orientation of that access. Am I looking at that right?
You're looking at it correctly, and, uh, it is plausible that the, uh, subdivider would, would move those utilities. He's certainly gonna build the road inside the forty-foot, uh, servitude of passage, so I mean, that is an option for him to have those moved, put underground, uh, whatever he sees, seems fit to do. I mean, if it, if it is an encumbrance, I'm sure he'll have it moved.
After he backs into one, I guess he's, I don't...
That's his liability, I assume.
I, I don't even, would the utility company even allow it, I guess, is my...
Well, sure, they'll move utilities all the time.
Well, I know they'll move it for about fifteen thousand dollars, they'll happily move it. Charles, do we have any, any kind of guidelines on that? I just don't see that as a desirable situation.
We don't have any guidelines on that.
I don't know. I can't tell you. Proven that.
My concern, I have, I have a concern with this piece of property, because I'm familiar with it. And it was a, a larger tract, and it's been cut up more than once. We're coming back with a resub of a resub. We're getting back into that. And, um...
When did we resub?
Uh, this, it's been done, uh, strictly as simple divisions of property, and it's been along public roads, so the commission would have never saw it.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't have a chance to get with Charles to get the, uh, the background flats to, to get out to y'all. But this is, this is one of those, those issues that we, we've talked about before, and we have to, we have to look at. And there is still potential for more, uh, more subdividing to take place on this piece of property. In fact, um, you have a, a ditch that cuts through this property, and then historically, property's a bowl.
I can attest to that, Mr. Commissioner.
It's a bowl, it's always been a bowl, and I, I don't know, I wanted to talk with the, uh, with the chairman of the drainage board about it, to see if there was anything that was going to be done with it. I think, for the time being, everything has been done. But, um, this is, this is one of those pieces that we, one of those areas we need to pay special attention to.
So we'd be putting four other homes potentially in that bowl?
Yeah. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
The history that we're talking about, we could, uh, find that and have that available to commissioners at some point?
History of that area flooding?
No, I'm talking about the, uh, the previous subdividing that you're talking about.
Yes, we should be able to do that.
Okay. Based on that, I'd like to make a motion to defer for us to be able to get a little bit more history to make a more educated decision on.
I'll second.
Have a motion to defer by Steve Barrow, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion?
Who's gonna get that information?
The staff.
Staff will get it for us?
I'll go ahead and make arrangements with the staff to, uh, take care of that for us.
And you get, get Bill Rue or somebody to chime in on drainage, too.
Okay.
Like you, you were going to get.
Okay.
Thank you.
Opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item nine, committee report, subdivision ordinance committee. You have a recommendation as far as T-turnarounds, but at the same time, you should have gotten an email pertaining to three other recommendations from the subdivision ordinance committee, and then tonight you have, along with one of those recommendations, an application, uh, a proposed application form. I guess we'll go ahead and, uh, since it is on the agenda, the recommendation of the use of T-turnarounds and cul-de-sacs. There was some supplemental information, uh, from OSHA, NFPA, and I believe, was it the international?
Let's see.
Yes.
International Fire Code.
International Fire Code. In your packet. And, uh, the recommendation from our ERA, based on our findings within the references previously mentioned, we recommend increasing the minimum lengths of the T-turnaround per the NFPA code to accommodate the current size of the fire trucks rather than eliminate it as a possible street dead-end turnaround option. This re- uh, increase may require the required right of way to also increase to maintain the current separation between right of way line and the T-turnaround curb. I believe we'd have to hold a public hearing on this, so what we will be looking for tonight would be simply a motion to hold that public hearing.
I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing concerning the, uh, T-turnaround information as presented to the commission by CR, uh, CSRF.
I second.
I have a motion to approve by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. There was also a copy of the email included in, in the folders that we got tonight. The second one is the, uh, policy for appeals of denial of subdivision plats, which you have the, uh, a company, proposed application with that. There was also, uh, there's also the discussion of a fee, which I think there was a little confusion on as to whether it was two hundred and fifty dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars. And I, I can't, I can't hold Mr. Parentin totally, uh, responsible for that, because in some of our conversations, and some of the, the, um, resource material, uh... Well, but there's other, there are other, there are other municipalities and, and local governments that, that are charging, um, twenty-five hundred dollars or, you know, but we, we can't with several like that, so I said, I, I can't hold O'Neill totally to blame for that.
Secretary was out there, but...
Yeah. So I...
But what is the correct fee?
Two hundred and fifty.
What is the correct fee?
The, the correct fee is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Plus, plus engineering cost.
Got it.
So it would be a base, a flat fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, and if there were any engineering costs incurred, that would be added on.
Okay.
So once again, I will be looking for a, um, motion for a public hearing.
Make a motion for a public hearing concerning, uh, fees?
I have a motion to approve by Scott Courtwright.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Uh, the second, or the third, I should say, is a policy regarding submission of additional material subsequent to submission. Uh, this has come about from time to time. We have individuals that want to present information to us during the meeting, and we haven't had a chance to review it, staff hasn't had a chance to review it, in some cases, it's books. There's no way we can review this during the meeting, so, um, I think, O'Neill, correct me on this, uh, we both basically decided to just leave it up to the commissions on a case-by-case basis.
By majority vote.
By majority vote. So if somebody wants to present something, we will vote on it. And, you know, it's according to how, how you feel. If you want more time to review the information, uh, then they'll have to, they'll have to hold it to give you more time, or however. Uh, once again, we'll be holding a, hold a public hearing on this, so...
I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. And the last is the policy for emergency entrance, entrances to gated and/or private subdivisions. Uh, this came about from some discussion we were having with the firemen, and, um, after reviewing the issue with staff and legal counsel, the recommendation is to, uh, have letters of no objection submitted. And that, that, well, from the fire department, police, emergency services, um, that would, that at least tells us that the developers are contacting the right people, and that everybody is on the same page. So once again, I'll be entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion for a public comment period, um, in regards to emergency services and their notification.
I have a motion for approval by Scott Courtwright.
A second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Uh, the only other announcement, uh, as far as, uh, this committee report, is that I have resigned from the subdivision ordinance committee. Too much on my plate. Uh, we, we have, uh, we have enough commissioners that we can maintain a working committee. So they will go ahead and elect a new chair, and, uh, I'm sure they will continue on in the, the fine work that's being done. Moving along, strategic planning committee report. Mr. Sigler?
I'm happy to report that the drainage ordinance, uh, was, has been introduced to the council, uh, and thusforth there have been no negative comments. It will be up for a, uh, hearing and a vote at its next meeting, which will be a week from, uh, tomorrow night. Cross your fingers.
Along with the drainage ordinance, I did happen to catch the drainage board meeting the other night. Is it possible for us to get a copy of the policies that they were looking at?
Yes.
For future reference?
And some of those, I believe. Right. Uh, some of those are things that were actually discussed and are addressed in the drainage ordinance itself.
Okay.
But yes, we'll get you a copy of those and the final copy of the drainage ordinance once it's approved.
Thank you, sir. Anything else as far as the strategic planning committee?
Uh, there's, there are a couple of items that will come up in the, I don't know what's coming up in terms of those ordinances that have been, that they contracted with a engineering firm. I don't know what the next one is gonna be they address at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
They may be code enforcement related.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That concludes our committee reports. Item ten, new business, any items of new business? No items of new business, then we'll move along to item eleven, old business. Public hea-, uh, eleven A, public hearing to consider for adoption is policy to general implementation plans submitted checklist and the specific implementation plans submitted checklist for traditional neighborhood developments. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I had a question. I, I didn't realize Sean wasn't gonna be here, but, um, on the first page, there is a, a check item, an aerial photograph to a scale of one to twenty, taken within twenty-four months of the application. As fast as our parish is changing, twenty-four months is a long time, and I wondered about changing that. And he's not here. Do you wanna comment on it, or do you, you know, we can wait until Sean can comment on it?
The only thing I can think of in that is that, um, obviously you can't force each developer to hire an airplane to go shoot their great piece of property, so sometimes you kind of have to get the aerials that are available on the LSU GIS website, or, um, you know, what is available, or maybe if someone has shot it, like AeroData or somebody, you can buy it from them. And so I think you probably did the twenty-four months just to give people that comfort zone that, you know, if a more recent aerial is not available, you don't wanna force them to go out and have to hire an airplane to shoot it.
I'm not sure...
I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, and, and...
I didn't discuss it with Sean.
And I would have to say that I would not think money would be a consideration on that. With the expenses they have on a TND, I would think that would be a minimal expense, hiring an airplane. And I could be wrong, I've never done...
Yeah, I don't know, really.
If, if it's a good aerial photograph, and it is, it has been digitally, and if everything about it is done correctly...
Rectified.
If it's rectified correctly, it's very expensive.
Okay. So do you think this is reasonable, twenty-four months?
Yes. In, in fact, but I think... In fact, but I think our latest one is like seven months old, I think, right now. And lately, we've been doing it every couple of years, but the rule of thumb is about every four or five years. In this case, we're growing so fast, it needs to be done quicker, but usually four or five years is recent enough most places. So 24 months, I think, is a good one. About the most you could ask for.
Okay. I just, like I said, I know as fast as things are changing in certain areas of parish, you could have a whole subdivision up on next door to the property and, you know, a flat 20...or a picture 24 months old wouldn't show a thing. It'd show trees.
And I would say this, too. To have a TND development, the incremental cost of having that aerial flyover...
I think it's minimal.
Is minimal. It is expensive if you're only doing...if you're only doing it for a small lot or a small subdivision, but traditionally, these things are big. These are a lot of money.
But to gear it up and to get the planes flying in formation, get everything done right to do one that's really worth something, I want to say that the number I saw the last time before the parish was like, it was right at a million dollars to do them right. Of course, they're taking the whole parish at the time, but the reality is when you send the plane up, whether you're taking the parish or one or two spots, it costs...a whole lot of that cost is just getting the thing set up and off the ground. It's pretty expensive.
Well, I would defer to your expertise, then.
Then I've done a few of them.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this issue, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak? Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Move to approve?
I have a motion to approve by Sherry Slimon.
I second.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Item 11B, cornerstone subdivision.
Good evening. Brandon Acosta, GWS Engineering, uh, back tonight to present cornerstone subdivision. We were deferred, uh, last month's meeting for a couple of issues. Um, we have conceded on those issues. One was to make the retention pond, uh, a common tract and not part of the lots. We have done that on the revised plat, and the other was to come up with an agreement to put a fence along the south property line, and Mr. Doran has talked to the adjacent property owner, and he is agreeing to do that.
Okay. Any comments or questions from commissioners?
But now the berm...the berm on the...on the, uh, on the detention pond is still actually on the back of the property line, is it not?
That is correct.
Okay.
Just not the water surface itself.
Okay.
And that's actually pretty common in most of our developments.
How about the T-turnaround?
Uh, as we discussed the last meetings...at the last meeting, this development itself, uh, it would sustain a two-lot loss on a...from a T-turnaround to a cul-de-sac, and...
Does it fit the new standards? Kathy, would you know that?
No, that...
I'm sorry.
Fifty-fifty is a hundred. They need to...
Did you say that? We just approved that?
We need 120.
So we heard a public hearing on it next month.
Oh, darn. Well, that's the thing that concerns me especially about a one-street subdivision. I mean, how am I going to get a fire truck in there and out? How am I going to get an ambulance in there and out? If it's a...if it's a through fair...you know, the people on the back end of the subdivision are...they're at a disservice because I can't get ER back there. If I lived in seven or eight, you know, you'd want ER to be able to get back there. That's realistic. That's my two cents. I appreciate you making the changes, but I'm still concerned about T-turnarounds in the whole parish. That's why I've made one consistently every night, every time tonight, so I'm not just picking on you, but...
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Public hearing was not closed on this item. If there is anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up and sign in with the secretary, but I am going to ask that if you are going to present the same information that was presented last month, don't. We...we remember it. Please sign in, ma'am.
I did speak with, um, Mr. Doran about the fence, and I just had a question about the timeframe on the construction of the proposed fence, because he seemed to not have any type of information on that. Um, because I...we just want to make sure that the fence is going to be put up, and I was just kind of concerned about who actually regulates that. Will...will he...how long will he have to put the fence up? And if the fence isn't put up, will it be when his final approval comes, or will it be before then? Or how does that actually work?
We'll handle that with our pre-construction meetings when he sits down with our inspectors. Uh, they'll take care of that as part of the pre-construction meeting, so that'll happen very quickly.
Okay, um, but at what point will the fence actually be put up?
It has to be completed.
Before the final...
Before the following inspection.
Okay. So that'll actually be before any houses or anything like that gets built?
Correct. Yes, ma'am, before utilities, anything else.
Okay. So that'll be like after what?
After the road goes through.
So after the roads for the actual subdivision?
Yes, ma'am, and all construction of the subdivision is done. Before he comes up, he asks for following inspection, he has to have the fence in place. It's mandated. Other than that, it's more difficult to deal with.
Okay, so if it's not, he won't get approved?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, no one else wishing to speak? Comments or questions from commissioners? And what's the wish of the commission?
Well, I appreciate the developers' efforts to address the concerns we had, uh, outside of the T-turnaround, which I'm, uh, concerned about as well, Scott, but at this point, we don't have a policy on that, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sherry Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I don't like the T-turnaround being small.
Are you objecting or...
That's my discussion. You asked for discussion. I'm not objecting, but that's my discussion. There's no policy, so I can't hold it. I can't defer, but I don't like that it's small.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Then the motion passes. Item 11C, the Annie Virginia Brignack Estates tract, uh, see, Estates tract A-1-A through A-1-E.
Not again.
Is there anyone representing the Annie Virginia Brignack Estates?
I'm Carl Leder with Alvin Faber and Associates. The reason we want old business is because we didn't attend the meeting last month. We had conflicting meetings, and we apologize. We're here tonight asking to subdivide a simple division of property on an existing servitude of passage. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak? Comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Charles, this...these lots meet the minimum?
They do.
No news is good news.
I just don't like five lots. That's just...it looks too much to me like a subdivision.
But it complies with your...
I understand. I'm just telling you...
I realize. I appreciate it.
So I'm having a hard time approving it. That's just my opinion.
You're having a hard time approving it?
Because it, to me, looks too much like a subdivision being formed.
I realize it looks like a subdivision to you, but it complies with your ordinance.
I understand that.
Sir, we do know our ordinances, okay? We do know it complies with the ordinances. We don't need you to tell us that.
Okay, well, what I'm saying...
We are aware of it. Right, right, no, no. You always had...no, excuse me, sir. I'm...I'm talking. The commissioners are going ahead and making their decision, okay? They've heard everything that everybody had to say. They had...if they had any questions, they asked the questions. If they didn't, they didn't. Now let them go ahead and make their decision, and let's leave it at that.
She made a statement to warn me. That's what I was answering.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does it meet the ordinance if he's asking for a variance?
He can request the variance. You're not obliged to grant the variance.
So it doesn't meet the ordinance? You're...
You wouldn't have variance in your ordinance if you would never...grant a variance, you wouldn't have them. They wouldn't exist.
But we don't have to give them?
That is exactly the case.
I'll ask the question once again. What is the wish of the commission?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to deny based on the variance is requested. I'm not willing to grant that variance, given the small lot size in a rural area.
I have a motion to deny by Steve Barrow.
Can I say something?
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Can I ask y'all something before y'all move on? He made a motion to deny on small lot size. The lots aren't small. It comply.
Sir, he made a motion to deny your variance.
Yes, on...the reason being, he said, because the lots were too small, is what he said. That's why he denied on the variance because the lots are too small.
You have a right to request a reconsideration. Motion's been acted on. Item 11D, Jimmy Gulche property, lots 2-A, A-1-A and B, 2-A, A-2, A through C.
Well, I hate to follow that.
Just play nice in the sandbox, and we'll all get along well.
Amen. I'm Roland Stevens. Uh, I'm here to ask for approval of our simple division. Previously, it was deferred, and I believe is what was requested was that we try to find some common ground with the existing residents on this particular lane. I guess the best way to say that is our efforts have been futile. I've had, uh, several, uh, conversations with some of the residents where I've issued my business cards, told them that I'd be willing to meet with them and address whatever concerns they might have, and, uh, I never had a response. I didn't stop there. I hadn't, uh...matter of fact, I even had Councilman Jerry Savoy meet me out there on the lot at the property. We looked at what he considered, uh, some of their, um, issues. We addressed them. He told me he would try to talk to these folks and see what we could do to make everybody happy. My...my response from him were that, uh, they were pretty well dug in and did not want me to be able to subdivide this particular piece of property. Um, y'all may have the additional plats that I happened to come across in the records at the clerk of courts office, where in actuality, there's already an existing 40-foot servitude of right-of-way at that property. 20 feet of it was dedicated by the property owners adjacent to myself back in, I believe, 1999. I can research that and, uh, show it to you. I have it right here. And also, there was a 20-foot servitude that had already been dedicated on the property that I bought. And in fact, there's asphalt lane, I believe is how it's described. It's in existence. There was some commentary about what size it was previously. I've got pictures with a tape measure here that show that it varies anywhere from 12 feet in width to nine feet in width, not, uh, eight feet or less. Pictures also show that the condition of the existing roadway is in very good condition. It's not depleted or stressed that was indicated. There was also some question about how many folks had property there in existence. I have a ownership map here that shows where the lots had been subdivided or parcels had been subdivided previously, and right now, I believe there are nine different lots on this road, and when we were approved, we would increase that to 12. So we're only adding an additional three lots on an existing 40-foot servitude of right-of-way. If, uh, y'all have any other questions, I would like to see, uh, these particular plots. We have them here, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from commissioners? Well, I do...you all did see the plats that had been submitted to us.
I'd like to point out...
The reference material?
Yeah. I'd like to point out that these additional plats are included and that I suggested that he go do some additional research to find these plats. So that's the reason that you got them a little late, but it became clear to me there was probably some other plat work out there that was not reflected.
Ron, you've had a chance to study these plats?
Sure, I...yes.
Okay.
And I suspected something like this was out there.
Okay. Well, can you kind of talk us through it, because we're just getting these, and I haven't had a chance to study it, and y'all may be faster. I have to study things, so I kind of need you to show me what's going on here.
If you'd like, I have some of the stuff highlighted on the plat that I have if you wanted to put it on the screen.
Well, let's start back.
If you look at the original and the oldest one out of this group is dated, uh, 8991. My guess is it's when this property was originally subdivided or maybe originally purchased, uh, by Mr. Gulche, and then it shows the Zito property next to it. In this oldest one, you'll notice a 20-foot servitude, which is actually across the piece of property that he is now talking about giving 20-foot servitude that already existed, uh, through the property. twenty-foot servitude that already existed, uh, through the property itself. And it shows the road towards the back of the property, goes on the Zito property and leads you to believe that the road was probably on the Zito property at that point. The second plat is dated six, twenty-two, ninety. This is the same piece of property again, which are the lots that he actually purchased. And you'll see that one of them is, uh, you know, Bonnie DeNino and then Jimmy and Bridget Gaucci. And it also shows the twenty-foot private servitude of passage. And finally, this particular plat is dated, uh, the last one, which I think is the most significant, is eight, eighteen, ninety-nine. It shows the adjacent property owners right below where the actual road meanders in and out. In addition, not only gave a twenty-foot private servitude of passage at that time, but above it is a footnote that says the existing and proposed twenty-foot servitudes of passage are to be combined into a single forty-foot servitude of passage and it's signed by the adjacent property owner, Mr. Gaucci. So there's been a forty-foot public easement through there for quite some time. There's another dedication also. If you look to the right on the vicinity map, that reads, "The right-of-way of streets shown herein, if not previously dedicated, is hereby dedicated to the perpetual use of the public. All areas shown as servitudes are granted to the public for use of utilities, drainage, sewer removal, or other proper person, purpose of the general use of the public. No building, structure, or fence shall be constructed, nor shrubbery planted," and so on and so forth, which basically says, although this is not a public road because it's not been accepted by the, by the parish, it's, it's been dedicated to the public for quite some time as a public access, uh, road. So the only issue would be whether or not he actually needed a variance to be on a parish-accepted roadway. In terms of meeting the minimum specs for the road and that type of thing, though, I think that pretty much is settled deal.
Just so I, I, I wanna make sure that I do understand this, that this, the twenty-foot servitude of passage on the adjacent property owner does go the full length of the subject lot in this case, okay?
Right.
Just want, I, it looked, that's what it looked like. I just wanted to double check and make sure. O'Neil? We've got a situation here where, probably need to get you involved as far as, we've got a notation, a note here on this plat dated August thirty-first, nineteen ninety-nine, where it says the existing and proposed twenty-foot servitudes of passage are to be combined into a forty-foot servitude of passage and then they are dedicated to the public use. Where do we stand as far as the parish?
As far as the parish is concerned, we have not accepted these roads in. As to who can use them, I think that's an issue to be resolved by the property owners and not by the parish. So it's a forty, I consider it a forty-foot rite of passage. Who can use it is not, is not our issue. That's an issue to be resolved by some people who disagree over that. But as far as we're concerned, it meets our requirement of a forty-foot rite of passage. That's what it's, they were combined.
Okay. Alright. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Oh, yeah. So, on the, the portion of the private lane where it hits Joseph Arrio Road, it's not actually on his property, but there is a twenty-foot rite of passage where he can use it, correct?
Correct. That, that notation says those are to be combined for forty feet and that's, whether he can use it or not, I think is not our issue. But I think there's a dedicated, I think that's an issue that property owners should dispute as to who can use what rite of passage. It's a private, I, I think that dedication says it's forty feet. If the people who live along there disagree, who can use it? I just think it meets our requirement of being forty feet. Now, and I'm comfortable with that. Now, um, I, I think there's some disputes between the property owners as to who said what, who said when, but I think that's to be resolved by a court and not by me. Or you, for that, to that effect.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Since it was deferred, the public hearing was, has been extended. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up and sign in. I'm also going to ask that you are not repetitious. We still remember the comments from last month.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I am Brittany DeNino. I'm the daughter of Bonnie Burrell, who had to be out of town today on work. In reference to the simple division of the Jimmy Gaucci property, we do not understand why this is being considered a simple division of property because the definition, according to your regulations, of a simple division is a division of property on a publicly dedicated road. If it can't be considered a family partition because of the LLC, why can't it be considered a simple division if it is not on a public road? That brings us to the variance. They're asking for the variance in order to develop on this private road. I believe, like we have said before, that this is a loophole which the contractors are using to get around their subdivision regulations. Mr. Roland Stevens has told my uncle that he plans on placing modular homes and renting them out unless and until his children may want to live there. Therefore, that makes him another contractor using this loophole. A variance requires some type of hardship. We see no hardship or unusual circumstances. Also, the hardship cannot be self-created nor can it be established on the basis by one who purchases with or without the knowledge of the restrictions. Therefore, Mr. Roland Stevens and Jimmy Charbonnet, DBA Ascension Development Group, purchased this property with or without knowing the regulations and they are now asking for a variance which is not allowable according to your own regulations. If you are planning on giving property to children of only one partner of an LLC, then why call your LLC Ascension Development if you are not in fact planning to develop? It is for insurance reasons. Why would anyone advise to form an LLC when you could plan on giving property to your children? Could it be because this is not their plan? Could it be council advised to, to form an LLC because they needed protection from potential renters? The existing home on the property is currently being rented to inform the commissioners. A variance also states that it should not be interest to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. If this variance is granted, it would be interest to the neighborhood because there's not enough room on the existing roadway to pass two cars and there's no way to enforce speeding or illegal activity on the driveway. If this variance is granted, it would be detrimental to the public welfare. Mr. Bob Turner, DPW Director, states that the council has just recently had to take in several private roads because of the high number of residents on the private roads. Therefore, contractors are profiting at the expense of taxpayers. They're being allowed to develop on private roads, rent and/or sell, and the parish has to come in and take them in to maintain. Also, how can you grant a variance on a private road that is not totally owned by the property owner? A good bit of the driveway that exists is on my aunt's property and was installed and paid for by family members because it was being used by family. How do we enforce the fact that he will be developing on property that is not owned by him? How do we address the fact that there could possibly be more damage to the driveway that could be done during the said construction? There are already construction equipments going down the road by the LLC that have caused damage. We are asking you, please not to grant this variance based on your own regulations because this is not a variance. This is a way to circumvent the system. The reason for the regulations is to stop this sort of development for the sake of the infrastructure of our parish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Kraus. My wife, Emma Kraus, owns the adjoining property labeled two, dash, B, dash, one, dash, A. And if you notice on the plat, that the private road, Gaucci-Zito land, lies almost entirely on her property from its start at Joseph Arrio Road through the complete depth of her property, a distance of two-hundred-and-thirty-two feet. And, uh, I would like to show a couple of things to start off with. This is but a single lot that he bought and it is this one right here. It is not two lots. What the, the, the map he's referring to is a map that was never official, officially recorded. It's a single lot. And... I don't know if you read it, but, uh, at the last, uh, meeting, he was trying to, I believe, make everybody believe that this was for a family partition. Ascension Development Group is owned in fact or has two associates, Roland Stevens and Jimmy Charbonnet. I'm here today because I object to Ascension Development Group's proposed division of property and the use of our private road to access any additional lots whatsoever. This is not a family partition. The land is owned by an LLC. All five lots are less than one-half acre required for a family partition. There are, there is no donor. There are no donors and therefore no conveyance of property. There is no obligation on their part whatsoever to treat this as a family partition. It is only for the sake of this variance that Mr. Stevens wants us to think of this as a family partition. This variance would allow a division of property for which there is no classification since it could not be described as a simple division as defined by Ascension Parish Subdivision Regulation ten, point, one oh eight. This variance would in fact create five small lots, one lot with road frontage and four enclosed lots stacked behind it. Ascension Parish Subdivision Regulation thirty-five, one oh four-
Thirty-second, sir.
In conjunction with Development Code, uh, Table B and Regulation thirty-five, two oh two, clearly state that the, with the exception of family partition, all lots in the RM district not served by central sewage shall have a minimum of ninety foot of public road frontage. A variance is not a loophole which can be used to circumvent those regulations which prevent Ascension Development Group from developing property away not intended by parish ordinance.
Time. Thank you. Patrice? Anyone else have signed up? That's it. Mr. Stevens, you wanna come back up?
I'd just like to show some pictures of, uh, what's currently on the property. They're talking about trailers and modulators. I don't wanna be ugly here. I'd just like you to see what we're talking about. I don't know if any of y'all had a chance to visit this particular property.
Several times.
All, all we'd like to do is improve it. That's the roadway that they're saying is substandard. That's one of the trailers just there. There's another one. There's the roadway with a tape measure. I don't know if you can see it, but there's the twelve-foot mark. I believe that's Miss Bonnie's trailer. Another picture of the roadway going back there. Trailer behind the gentleman just spoke's house, right here, on his property. And that's another shot of the roadway that's there. There's the frontage on Joseph Arrio Road with mailboxes on. That's another picture that shows the twelve-foot mark in the roadway where it's a little wider than twelve feet. And, uh, all I can say is that we've tried to answer the quest of the commission. We've had servitudes moved, revoked. We've tried to meet with the folks to find out what they wanted us to do to improve it. I don't know what else to say. We just wanna be good neighbors. But, uh, apparently, um, you just can't please everybody. I appreciate you considering this and hope that you'll grant our division. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you consider, it seems like the road is the point of contention, the private drive?
That's, that's the latest one, Ms. Slime. We've started with, uh, we've had drainage was the issue and we've had-
Okay, let me ask you a question.
Right-of-ways. We've been, we've been around the ball with these filibuster tactics to try to stop-
Let me, let me ask you a question. Would you consider putting your own road for the front three lots?
That's, that's something that, uh, I would consider if I'm not within the, the, uh, ex, uh, for me, I'm having a hard time with it because it seems like we're being singled out when other places that are meeting the requirements and that are in similar situations, aren't falling into any special provision where they have to add this or add that.
Unless you consider the man that just walked out of here.
Well, I can understand that, but-
I'm not saying you have to. I'm just saying if the problem is the road, they don't want you to-
We, we would consider, we would try to, try to do what we can, but, uh, you know, when we first looked at this property, we had the same thing in mind from the beginning. And we were told that it met the requirements and if not, we could donate the additional right-of-way. And only after a lot of research into this did it come to light that the right-of-way is actually already there. And if you read it very carefully, it also says, and where the gentleman said it's not two lots, that's not correct. And it is stamped and I do have it where it was recorded in the courthouse. And also, the other items were recorded in the courthouse, as well as the existing servitude. So, uh, we would like to try to, to make everybody happy with this particular thing, but we were told from the beginning that we, we could do what we were trying to do. So if we need to do something else, I won't say that I wouldn't consider it, but, uh, my comment is just, uh, and I don't mean to be ugly about it, but why would we be singled out in this particular circumstance other than the fact that, you know, it's kinda hard for us. They got a couple ladies that work in different departments at a parish. And obviously, they have a lot of friends and influence because we've been around and around and around with this. But, uh, I, I would say that we probably could-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, you know, keep your comments to this piece of property and let's not talk about the neighbors.
Understand?
Uh, I mean, now, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, we, we've got, with some of what's been presented here tonight, and these are the, the plats that you have, you know, that you've shown us or recorded in the courthouse, I, I've got a couple of questions for staff pertaining to your plat that, that you're submitting now. Because what we're gonna end up with is gonna be sixty feet of dedicated servitude. Okay? Because you went ahead, they had the existing twenty-foot and then you dedicated another twenty-foot, but now we found out on the opposite side of the property line, there's twenty-foot there. And I, and O'Neil, I understand, that's between the property owners, but the question I've got, if the commission does approve this plat, are we only gonna be recognizing the forty-foot of servitude that is being dedicated or since we have other plats that have been recorded, is at some point, is that the other twenty-foot of servitude that's on the adjacent property gonna have to be recognized too?
Can I make a suggestion to that?
For sixty-foot, I, I'm-
Can I make a suggestion to that?
Sure.
If, if, and I don't, like I said, I don't vote, if you decide to approve the plat, I would provide that you, I would recommend you approve the plat with a forty-foot rite of passage, and a twelve-foot utility servitude. And, um, I, I'm assuming that Mr. Stevens thinks the forty feet is the twenty and the twenty? And that if that is ultimately resolved in a court to be not correct, that he have to resubmit a plat having forty feet on his own property. That would be my suggestion.
I would agree to that.
Okay. I'm not making a, that's how I would suggest you, you do this, that he submit a plat that way.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from commissioners? And if there are no comments or questions from commissioners, I'm going to ask, what is the wish of the commission?
I guess I have a question for staff. This is just, is this a simple division of property with a variance, or is this a simple division of property with a waiver? And what's the difference?
It's with a variance? And really, there's no difference. It would be a waiver or a variance of lot frontage on a public street.
Did that reset our timer?
You're at two minutes now. I would, I'll go ahead, I'm going to reset it, but I'm only going to let it go for a minute and a half the next time. I mean, we, and look, you've been presented all this information. This is one issue that has gone far beyond where it should have, okay? It just has. I realize there are some-
Questions.
Well, there are some concerns, all right? I understand that. But at the same time, I understand that, you know, we received some information tonight that really does put a different light on the whole thing, too.
And speaking about that, a great segue, Mr. Chair. In one of these maps with the big numbers, number four-four-five-seven-eight-four on the top, the Gochet Zito Lane appears on all, has a twenty-foot private servitude passage, it's all on the Jimmy Gochet side of the property, okay? Then when you look at this right here, what we got tonight, actually where the lane sits is not in the bed according to this 1999 drawing. So, I know in actuality, it sits here where it's at right here, where you guys drive up and down every day, but on this map, it tells me it sits north of that, completely on somebody else's property. So, this is my gut feeling. I'm trying to make a decision that's going to affect a lot of people's lives, and maybe there are splitting hairs, maybe all that kind of stuff, but I don't have the right survey, which one do I believe? Who do I go with? What do I do?
Well, any way you look at it, he's still got forty feet on his property.
Absolutely. But I think the issue, Sherri, is that the lane isn't on his property.
But there is a servitude on the lane.
But at the same time-
That may be the case, but why was the drawing done like this in 99? Why wasn't it built in the right place? That's my question when I look at this map.
It says, this is according to this map, it should be right here.
Of course, another question that comes to mind is how it's, you have all these different surveys showing up, and they don't, what becomes real obvious is that one surveyor, in many cases, does not look at previous things, and that's a problem we run into all the time. No one goes back and looks at what was filed before.
An interesting thing in that, same guy signed two of these, which really bothers me.
Yeah. So you really, and, you know, even to add to that, in 91, it's one lot, in 94, it's two, and in 99, I really don't know, because this isn't really my, really, it looks like one again. I don't know.
Well, I think ninety, I think the 92 one appears to me, it was probably done to split that one into two lots.
Wait, the 92? I have a 91, a 94, and a 99.
91, 91 is the oldest.
Yes.
The second one appears to me, it's when they split the one lot into two.
Correct.
Okay? And that's the same piece of property.
Correct.
And then this final one, the third one, is of course the adjacent piece of property, which is what basically creates the forty-foot right-ofway when you put the two of them together.
Correct. And I cannot see exactly what's going on up here, because that wasn't the intent of this drawing.
The road meanders, you know, who knows where the road was then?
Absolutely.
That was probably, I'm sure that was before it was paved, probably. But it would also explain why the road meanders, if you, this, the latest survey that he has provided that shows the roadway, I didn't understand why the road would meander as much as it does between the right-ofways, but that explains it. It's got a forty-foot right-ofway through there, they, it runs all over there.
Dodging trees and so forth, yeah. I know. I know, I wasn't trying to buy time. I'm trying to understand-
Well, I'm just, do you understand a little better now? I mean, is it, if some of your questions-
I understand that there were some surveyors that were confused, and I'm trying to make a decision based on their Confucius. Yes, I understand that.
No, we, the public hearing portion is closed. This is now for commissioners to have discussion. And I realize, and I do understand, Scott, you know, the questions that you have. At the same time, I also have to look at, does this meet our requirements as far as the ordinances are concerned? And it does.
But at the same time, aren't, didn't we just speak about there being a waiver requested?
He can request, it is his right to request a variance.
Right. And it's our right to consider his variance that he's requesting? And that's where we're going right now?
You are correct. It is your right to consider that.
I had phone calls this week, I don't know if anybody else got them, about this property. And the residents told me, or a representative of the residents told me that Mr. Stevens had not contacted them. And I, I'm torn on what to do. I want to, I want to support the residents, but I do feel like Mr. Stevens has done what he needed to do. Mr. Stevens, let me ask you one more time. This is just a yes or no answer, okay? Would you be willing to put in your own road for those front three lots to get off of their lot, off of their lane?
I'd be willing to consider it, but not-
What if the motion depended on it?
Well, this, if you look at the plot very carefully, their drive, the outside of the drive, it was so to be part of it when we bought it. The conditions it was made, when everybody, they had the use of it, and everybody was responsible for maintaining it. So, I've already paid for a portion of that driveway, purchased that part.
Okay.
So, from my standpoint, it seems extremely unfair.
Okay, that's good. That's all I need.
But I would do my best to try to get along with this.
Okay. Ron, you had something you wanted to say?
Well, we've thought about that, and maybe making that a recommendation, and originally, that's what we were going to come back with and say, you know, he needs to dedicate, put in his eighteen-foot hardtop surface all the way through there. But when you look at this survey, and the way the road meanders through there, you run into some problems real quick, like at the mouth, where it hits Joe Severio, you end up with about a three-foot gap there, where there's no pavement at all, and you don't have extended, he can line his culverts in to the end of theirs to get there, but as you go further into his property, their road dissipates, well, can't help but, and be through there for like, what is it, a lot and a half, or two lots, or something like that, where their road actually merges, and would actually get over to the side and go on the other side of his road, and then come back in, because of the meanders. What happened was, the road just got put in there the easiest way to miss trees, and no one paid attention to the survey or anything else, and so now we've got an existing road that runs all over the forty-foot, and probably gets off of it a couple places by foot or two, as driveways will tend to do.
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make an emotion to approve with variance.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slime. Is there a second? And the motion fails due to lack of a second.
How much time do we have? You got a hair trigger on that.
Well, we had the discussion, so I-
That's what has to be decided tonight, it was deferred. We've got to make a decision.
When do the motion from that side of the table?
And then, but at the same time, well, you're on the clock.
How much time do we have?
Do you now? Well, you're at five seconds, so start again. But at the end of two, whether there's discussion or not, I'm going to bang the gavel one way or another.
How much, from the time of the motion to the time when you have to have a second, how much time?
Oh, how much time for that? I haven't really gone. That's just overall for a motion.
That's what we wanted.
But we need, we need to move on with this, because, you know, it's-
Based on Sherri's review of this thing, I respect her decision, and I will go ahead and second that motion.
All right. Sherri, before I said her motion died, so I want her to restate her motion.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to restate it anyway, because I did not include what O'Neil said about the forty-foot right-of passage and the twelve-foot utility servitude be included. Was that all I needed to, okay? So that, my motion would be to approve.
I second it.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slime, and seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any objection or discussion?
I object.
I object.
Okay. I have two objections so far. All right, see, item 11E. The stone subdivision was granted preliminary approval on May 9, 2007, with a cul-de-sac in lieu of the proposed T-turnaround. The developer and engineer are requesting a reconsideration of requiring the cul-de-sac. You should all have a copy of the letter submitted by Tatum Engineering. Let me go ahead and let everybody call it to your attention. We are not holding the public hearing tonight for this reconsideration. This is just a request for reconsideration, so the motion, if we decide to, the motion would be to bring this back next month for reconsideration.
You want to make that motion?
Mr., well, Mr. Tatum, please, go ahead and-
Good evening. I'm Jim Tatum with Tatum Engineering, representing Brian Belzer. Mr. Chairman, this is the first time we've heard anything about deferring a decision on this for another thirty days.
That is our appeals process, Mr. Tatum. You are requesting a rehearing. That does not take place on the same night. Your request will be voted on by this commission, whether or not to hold that rehearing.
Okay, well, it was my understanding that we were simply asking for reconsideration.
It says that you're, you would like on the next available agenda, so that seems to me that it's not tonight, but the next agenda.
Okay, well, it was my understanding that it would be tonight, that this commission could act on this reconsideration tonight.
Not according to the ordinances in our appeals process.
Okay, well, then we certainly want to be on the next available agenda, if it's a month from now.
Well, they've got to vote on it first.
First off, the commission has to vote whether or not we're even going to hold a rehearing on this, because this is, this is in reference to requiring a cul-de-sac rather than a T-turnaround. So, comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, I guess before, before I would, you know, want to act on that, what's the, why are you guys coming back to, what's the reason for this? Why do you want a cul-de-sac versus T-turnaround, et cetera? Explain what you're back here for.
In our original submittal, we had turned in a preliminary plat showing a T-turnaround and the proposed subdivision. The night of the planning commission meeting, a motion was made to approve the subdivision, but require a cul-de-sac. However, at that time, and I think it's still current today, that the ordinance allows for a cul-de-sac or a T-turnaround. And I know that this issue's been discussed before this commission since the night of our first hearing, and it was my understanding, and although it may be, my understanding may have been incorrect, I thought that this, we came before the commission, we were at the commission meeting a month ago, and we talked before the meeting, and I thought we could be heard tonight.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll bring that back up. Conversation with Charles Becknell, where Charles told me that after a conversation he had pertaining to this with legal counsel, it was stated that, according to legal counsel, this had to be advertised, and that you were made aware of that. Then when you and I talked, you did not bring that fact to my knowledge, that you were aware of that. So unless legal counsel came up with something else, saying you didn't have to be, or didn't have to be advertised, I mean, you weren't going to end up on the agenda, Jim. That's all there was to it.
I understand it. I thought, I thought there was, under old business, that we could, it could have been discussed at the last meeting, it was, I was told that it couldn't be, it had to be advertised, we'd have to come back next month.
May I speak as a developer?
Go ahead, sir.
As this developer, I've been in touch with Ms. Paige Becknell, I've been in touch with the fire chiefs, especially Mr. Mark Stewart. I am a member of the Prairieville party, pardon me. It was my understanding, as Mr. Scott Courtright has said numerous times tonight, as well as Mr. Stephen Barrow, that there are ordinances in effect, and the ordinance states either a T-turnaround or a cul-de-sac. And the T-turnaround, as I talked with Ms. Paige Becknell, we went, this whole subdivision, I've been above and beyond every ordinance that this commission has required. My lots are very large, I'm putting in more hydrants than is required, the road is wider than required. I've talked with Ms. Paige Becknell, we were going to make the T-turnaround larger than required, and yet, as Mr. Scott advised at the very first of this meeting, an ordinance is an ordinance. It's there, it's an ordinance. And the ordinance was that we can either, either a T-turnaround or a cul-de-sac. In August of 2006, whenever we did go before Mr. Charles Becknell and the engineers and commissioners, or not commissioners, but the engineers and the parish, it was, it was told us we could have either or, and they, you know, it was agreed to a T-turnaround because of the current ordinance. Whenever we were told that it wasn't correct, I mean, you know, pretty much, we were not allowed, and we have been the only subdivision that has not been allowed to put in a T-turnaround since then, and own the only subdivision that has been required a cul-de-sac, as tonight, Mr. Stephen Barrow passed a single-road subdivision with a T-turnaround that came up at our meeting also.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to keep your remarks to your development and not the other business that has taken place in this commission meeting tonight, and I'm only going to ask you once.
Okay. I'm just asking why, if it was an ordinance, and we're trying to go above and beyond what y'all are requiring, I don't understand why our subdivision, I don't understand, if the ordinance is either or, why we have to put in a cul-de-sac. That's my question to the commission tonight, and I know you're sitting up there, and everyone else is sitting up here, and I'm, I don't understand, and it's, you know, I know y'all don't really see it, but it's affecting everything that's going on in this whole parish, as far as the subdivision's got.
So you're familiar with the new proposed T-turnaround information going forward, would the one that you're, you guys are going to put in meet the requirements for that?
No, the week after May, week after, I think it was two days afterwards, I talked with Ms. Paige Becknell about the current T-turnaround, I talked with Mr. Mark Stewart, the fire chief of Prairieville. the fire chief of Prairieville. He was the only one that was at the meeting with Ms. Paige Becknell at the time, the very first meeting, back in January, February. I talked with both of them, and got a letter from Mark, and talked with Ms. Paige Becknell at the same time about expanding the T-turnaround, you know, due to the fact that y'all thought the current one was too small. And, you know, like I say, I have no problem doing anything that the commission asks, except being singled out. And I have definitely gone above and beyond.
You've not been singled out. We've brought this up to every developer that's come before as suggestions.
Consistently.
It was a suggestion.
You're not being singled out, and we've not seen the letter from Mark Stewart that you say you have.
It was, but it was a suggestion with all the others. Y'all, it was a requirement for me.
It's been a requirement for others.
Absolutely. And the other thing, too, the foregone thought here is, as the commission, we are embodied to not only follow the ordinances, but many times, in the two and a half years that I've been sitting here, the term health, safety, all of those issues come to play, with all due respect to your development. I am not willing to be in this position and compromise anyone's safety. You, as a fireman, should know that. If a cul-de-sac means you're gonna lose a few hundred square feet of land and shorten someone's lot, you may not even be able to put the lot in, the fourth thought should be, for safety of the people moving into your subdivision, that's an amenity. You say, my subdivision's safe, we've got a cul-de-sac, that's going above and beyond. A T-turnaround and getting the minimum, if you will, and we're addressing that with these new standards, thank goodness, that's my personal opinion, we will be addressing those things. So to say you're going above and beyond, I appreciate that you want to extend it, and I, and I certainly appreciate that you want this development to move forward, and so forth, and so on, but please understand, just like Paige said, we're not singling you out. What I'm singling out is safety for the citizens of Ascension Parish. That's what I'm singling out. I've mentioned it every time, tonight, I mention it, just about, that and wetland stuff, I mention just about every time, we talk about it. I want my kids of Ascension Parish and their families to be safe. That's the bottom line. So, you haven't been singled out, I appreciate the letter, I appreciate it that you guys want to be reheard, but it's my two cents to say that, when you step up and you're willing to understand safety first, as a fireman, then I'm willing to hear what you gotta say. It may look like a T-turnaround, but show me how a fire truck can turn around in it and get people in and out, and ambulance can get in it, and ER can respond to it, I'm all for it. If you don't show me that, guess what? Hadn't been addressed yet. So I get a little bit offended, I'm not singling you out.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's all I gotta say.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And in that issue, I would just like to say, as a fireman, I know, you know, how the T-turnarounds work, that's why we propose to enlarge the T-turnaround.
Well, I'm neither an engineer or a fireman, but I know that if the national standard isn't met, then apparently, there's, there's an issue. So if your cul-de-sac, or your T-turnaround will meet the national standard, before we even put that into an ordinance form, that's above and beyond.
What is the national standard?
You should, I mean, you should know, I mean, ask the, it's right here on the deal.
While I would like to go ahead and continue this, I think we're kind of getting off the track, as far as, would we like to go ahead and reconsider this, or yes or no? I'm entertaining a motion on that. I, you know, I'd like to move along with this, because we do have other business to take up.
The issue is whether to hear the...
Whether you want to go ahead and grant a rehearing to reconsider this request or not. That's, that's the motion I'm looking for. Yes or no?
I'll second.
Your motion to reconsider?
Yes.
All right.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion to reconsider by Sherri Sloman, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Now, item 12, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Scott Courtright, seconded by Paige Becknell. We are adjourned, and we will reconvene in 10 minutes for a special meeting, public hearing for Dutch Town Gardens. Amen.